Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Farmington School Board meeting for Tuesday, January 19th. Is there any public participation?
Hello, my name is Laura Vittorioso. I just wanted to start by saying that I feel that this board has worked very hard over the last several months on the budget with some very, in a very difficult situation. It is very uncommon to have such drastic cuts in two years in a row, and I truly do appreciate the work that has been done so far. With that being said, after the budget hearing on Friday night, we all know that additional cuts still need to be made in the amount of $89,785 and the additional $320,000, I didn't know the exact number, sorry, to cover the insurance costs. I strongly urge you to please make the cuts in areas where children will be the least affected. In my opinion, there are areas in the budget, especially in the SAU portion, where additional cuts can be made. I have spent part of the weekend going through the budget that was passed out on Friday and highlighted some areas that I felt could be cut back. I totally understand that as a board, you are under no obligation whatsoever to even look at my suggestions, but it felt that it was very important, from my opinions, to be heard. I also feel that it should be noted that at this point, the Valley View Community School has taken the largest amount of hit in regard to the budget cuts. Next year, Valley View will also have the largest student population and will begin its implementation of full-day kindergarten. Therefore, it is of my opinion that additional cuts should be made first at the SAU level facilities and then each of the schools from oldest to youngest. Please forgive me, I would really like to stay, but I have some other obligations that need to be attended to this evening. Please know that I am listening at home, and I feel that asking for the budget cuts that will least affect the educational services of the children of Farmington are the utmost importance. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead, Jo.
Oh, yes, okay, you're gonna, do you have copies? Well, we should-
I didn't, I didn't know-
These would be good for deliberative session, actually.
Yes.
So, so make sure that, because this budget is not ours anymore.
Yeah, we can't-
Until deliberative session, I mean-
Right now.
Oh, you still, you-
Not until deliberative session.
So, I thought, I'm confused, and isn't that what's on the agenda tonight?
Well, it's, it's-
The budget because we-
It's not, it's not our budget.
Yeah, we, the budget committee approved the budget that we presented to them.
Okay.
So, any other changes except for, I think, the $89,000?
As you say, the $89,000 would be-
That's it, because we didn't-
Well, even, even that is part of the-
That's what I thought.
Even a Farmington budget is-
Until deliberative session, so we, there was just a con, there was a difference of opinion as to the $89,000. That was why I put the budget on the agenda, because Lori-
It's not been specific to me where the $89,000 has been cut from. I've looked at the meeting minutes on January 4th, and it said it's coming from the bottom line. So, just keep in mind that I still have to file and show to the public the state reports, the municipal statement reports at the voting places and at the schools, you know, what the whole itemization is. So, I still need to put that $89,000 as a reduction someplace in a function on those state forms.
So, that was what the, that, right, but the other, all these other cuts-
The $320,000.
None of that, we, we, that was, that is with the, we don't touch that, it's the budget committee's budget.
But you have to touch the $89,000, isn't that what you need to discuss tonight?
Yeah.
You need to give me a directive on where that's being-
Well, it's, it's just a, it's a placeholder, really, it's not, it's just a satisfier, the state, but it's, it's, that budget was voted on by the budget committee with that $89,000 in it, no?
No, it was out, it was out.
Out of it.
Out of it.
It was out.
It was out.
Well, it, it is part of the, it is part of that budget.
No, it's not.
Because we've already, as a, as a board, we voted that on to the budget committee.
Yes, but it says right here-
Without the $89,000 in the budget.
Well, when we put it in, because you didn't hold a public hearing, that's why we delayed the public hearing until the, whatever that day, that, what, 12th?
Twenty-second.
No, that's, that public hearing, that wasn't a public hearing. That was just, we, the public hearing was, whatever, what date was that, last week?
For the budget committee's public hearing?
That's right.
All right, so that was-
Friday, the Friday night.
So, Friday night.
$89,000 was already gone from the-
Yeah, it was already gone.
Correct.
But we-
It was gone, yeah, it says right here, it says, "Farmington School Board Vote Exact Lines To Be Determined." So, this four-
Well, that, what, what that says, it doesn't make any difference, the budget is already gone forward. It's the budget committee's budget.
I think it's right.
But, because this is nineteen, this is the year 17 budget, but-
Where would that function appropriation be used by?
Well, we'll have to, we, we can, we can show that, but it's, it's-
Well, you have to show that, don't you, don't you legally have to?
Well, she's, she's saying we need to, we need to do that.
We actually have to do it by the 25th of January, when the reports are put out to the public.
And the deliberative session is the 30th.
Thirty, yeah.
Right. Your municipal statement, your MS-27.
Pick the first three lines.
So, but, so the $89,000 came out of the, the budget line that we created for the SAU budget?
That part, I don't have a specific directive.
Because we didn't, because they didn't take that as a directive, because we didn't make a formal motion.
I read through the meeting minutes, it's not-
Yes, we did, yes, we did.
No, we didn't.
No.
I asked at that meeting, I said, "Where at the SAU are we taking that?"
No, we made a line for the SAU portion.
In Farmington's budget.
That's correct, and that's where it's at, that's where it's at right now.
When you made the motion to reduce it by $89,000, I asked where it was coming from.
So, you have a line right now for the SAU budget within-
And the vote was, it's coming from the bottom line, that's what the-
Well, it, it's gotta come out of that line.
Bottom line of the SAU.
Okay, folks, you need to solidify what your intentions are.
No, no, not-
Right, but when we were dealing with that, Jo, what we were looking at was the actual SAU budget before it was put into the Farmington School Board budget. So, that was where we got that figure.
So, so whatever that line is, well, it's 9, 953 plus 89, there you go.
That's irresponsible, though, to just say, "Just take it out of anywhere."
No, no, because it's-
Okay, you know what, I'm just going to move on with my agenda, we're gonna continue with the public comment, and then we're gonna deal with the budget when we hit the budget.
Before we go to, to other public input, may I just respond to the, to the-
Yes.
Public input we just had, and we just want to clarify something, is it Lori?
Laura.
Laura?
Yes.
I just want, I just want to clarify something, something that you just said. So, when you made the statement that Valley View has experienced the most cuts, are you looking at, in this, this budget cycle, or are you looking at the last two-year cycle? Because we started cuts based on-
Yes, I was looking at the most recent one that we got, the one that had the scores on it, and it said Valley View was losing the 15%.
Okay, and then you said that they'll have the most population next, next year?
Yes, that was mentioned at the budget hearing on Friday.
So, it was my understanding that for, that, that Henry Wilson will have a, a little over 400 students next year?
411.
So-
It's a current number.
That's an current number, and then you subtract-
Well, but based on our projections that we're getting in administrators' reports, they're still over 400 next year.
The figure they gave us on Friday was 263.
For what, for what school?
298 for high school and 350 for Valley View.
Okay, so-
I had 340 for Valley View, too.
It's kindergarten, kindergarten.
It's the all-day kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Full day.
The anticipated increase of-
So, they said the all-day, yeah.
Then, and those projections do not match what we get for principals' reports, because I look at next year's numbers, I take third grade-
And put a multiple.
Current, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, and seventh, take eighth grade out, and I've added those numbers together, and they usually run around that 400 mark. So, there's something wrong in the principals' reports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, Angie?
Good evening. Angie Cardinal, Farmington resident. I've made a couple phone calls, sent a couple emails, just to educate myself on the total tax impact that's being posted and reported to the different committees, and I do have some questions. I don't know if you want to answer them now, or just wait until you go through some of the agenda items tonight, but on the last page of the December 4th presentation that the SAU delivered to the budget committee to present the school budget without the SAU portion at the time, because they were not combined, the last page states that a change of 48 cents on the tax rate was expected, was anticipated because of the 92,925, that it was less projected because of the loss of revenue, right? And then 210,517 from the community to support the schools was gonna be the total. And that represented 48 cents on the tax rate. I just am very unclear how we jump to Article III representing a $1.59 increase on the current tax rate. It seems like a very high jump from December to January, considering the only thing that's been done was to cut the $89,000 in expenses.
I guess I don't have that to mention.
I don't have that either.
959 is-
I, I think you're looking at the tax rate worksheet that's on the website.
Yeah.
And what the superintendent did was to show, based upon general fund only, not looking at any other funds, on that PowerPoint, what he anticipated, I have it actually here, with me here, that simply took, maybe I should take a look at that, I'm looking at the same thing. Was that what he would have taken was $210,517 divided by your tax base, your SaaS base of $440 million, and that's where it came up with the 48 cents. So, I mean, the calculation is correct, in order to maintain a level of education and programming, we all work so hard, need to request, we, the, the slide says that we would be requesting the budget committee and the commit, the community, to kick in another $210,000 to make the budget work. That's what the 48 cents relates to in just this specific-
Is that 210,000?
210,000, so-
Which is the-
Plus the 300.
The difference between what income was gonna come in and what expenditures need to be made on the school front and on the SAU.
Right, so if you took, took the 92,925, the loss in the SAU apportionment, 117,000, I'm just talking in round numbers right now, so, and that's where the 210,000 came in.
Yes.
When you see the tax rate worksheet, now it's taking, it's looking at the entire, it's, you're looking at the entire budget, general fund, you're looking at food service fund, you're looking at your federal grants, and your preschool.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's where you come up with the raise and appropriate of $15,756,816. Then you subtract out what you're gonna have for revenues, and that's where these numbers up at the top, the projected revenues, your state adequacy aid, and your statewide property tax. So, then over on the right, you have your net amount to raise locally. So, that's looking at the entire general operating budget. Amount to raise locally is $6,476,870, as it stands now. So, it's not uncommon that we go and we take little pieces of the budget and say, "Well, what's the tax impact of this piece?" Or, "What's the tax impact of that piece?" And that's what that, that's what the gist of that slide was, "Well, what's the tax impact of asking the town to help us by 210,000 because we've, we don't have income from Middleton, and we also have a loss of adequacy monies?"
A loss of adequacy monies makes up that difference between 210,000 and 6 million. Is that what you're telling me?
I'm, I'm saying that, yeah.
Stan?
Angie, I think what, I think what the issue is, was that-
Yeah.
The, the original budget was expected to be reduced by, I think, one and a half million, and we couldn't get there within a logical way, we were 210 dollars, 210,000 short, which is what the, the slide was saying, instead of getting the 1.5 million reduced so we wouldn't raise our taxes at all-
Right.
We were asking for a 43% hike because we needed that extra money, so that's why that particular 200,000 was on that slide. These were the things we could not cut.
So, in the presentation on December 4th, why wasn't the 6 million need to be raised brought up? Why do we leave that part out when the school board is presenting to the budget committee?
Because when we present to the budget committee, we typically are presenting the changes from the prior year's budget, so they already have the information from the prior year, and we're going over what the differences are and how they might affect the tax rate and programming.
So, you're already at 2502, so the projected increase is that 210 plus other expenses, like, less adequacy? Now, where's that 138,000, where's that show up?
That's in your revenue report.
So, as a shortage?
Yes, yeah, that's in your revenue tab.
Can you bring my book?
And basically, I mean, it's been taken into consideration when I do the, that large tax rate sheet. I think one of the things that I've seen historically, and, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, because a lot of you have sat on the board longer than I've been here, is that that landscape tax rate sheet typically is done at the time that we do present to the budget committee. It's not done when we do like our first, I call it a soft presentation, the beginning of December, because we're still going and we're really truly finalizing some numbers and getting revenues and, and revenue information, so historically, I've seen that tax rate sheet provided at the time of the budget hearing, not earlier.
Yeah, I, I think I can agree with that.
Okay.
That's typically when it comes out.
Yeah.
And then on January 4th, when the board made a motion second and voted four to one in favor of cutting the $89,000 and change amount, what was the intention of that number?
That was, that was the loss of revenue. We, matter of fact, that number was 118,000.
Yeah.
That was, we made a motion that, I think at the previous meeting, and that's the loss of revenue from Middleton. And somehow, let me see, 30, what would that be, 30? Yeah, I think it was 30,000, we would realize from the health savings on the insurance of the SAU employees. So, that's the difference, so that's-
So, those employees' health insurance is staying unchanged?
Well, it's-
But the tax impact of-
We were, we, we are still working on that with a memorandum of understanding, and that may change and may not, but that's where, that's what the difference is, because you got less revenue. Less revenue means you're gonna have to pay out of taxation.
Right.
So-
So, if the intention was to reduce the SAU budget line, and I guess the ministers aren't reflecting what that intention was at the time, if the intention was to have no tax impact as a result of Farmington going down to one district, one, yeah, a one district SAU-
Right, well, last, the last-
Then, that's not happening with this budget.
Well, you can't not have any tax impact.
Yes, well, you can-
When, when we originally sat down and, and did the area agreements meetings with Middleton, we talked at this board level of taxes raising between $4 and $6,000.
Up to seven.
Up to $7,000, and everybody had the opportunity then, nobody came forward and said, "I don't want to pay that."
Who, who would be the nobody?
Well, nobody came to the, the meetings and said, "Hey," well, I won't say nobody, not many people spoke out about how that was going to affect them, no, there wasn't a whole lot of discussions.
And the discussion we heard was, "We'll pay."
And, and for $1.86 out of a possible seven, and we're at $1.86, I think, I think this administration did a darn good job.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's not saying that, I'm just saying that the intention of the board is unclear, what the intention was of cutting that $89,000.
Well, we're gonna take, we're gonna talk about that later in the evening.
Okay, and then if I could just have one more question regarding the negotiation to get the memorandum of understanding with, between the school board and the union, it's, I was here at the meeting when the decision that it wasn't gonna happen was articulated to this board, and it's, it, my impression was, it was final, it was done, it's not happening, so we gotta cut $324,000, was my summary of how the statement went, we can look back at the minutes, you guys are gonna approve them tonight, I think. So, I would strongly urge the board to go back to try to get those savings, if that's not already what you're planning to do, but you may want to change who represents you from the school board in trying to get the memorandum of understanding through and get some sort of a health insurance savings, because from, you know, an outsider looking in, it seems like the effort on that front was very last minute and may not be a open-minded effort at this point. So, you might want to kind of change the players in that, would be my suggestion. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other public participation? Deb?
Hi, Debbie Pay, I just have a couple questions. I noticed in the school board minutes, it said that there's part-time secretaries at the SAU. Can you tell me how many part-time secretaries you have at the SAU and what their hours are? What, what's part-time to them? I-
No, secretaries, we're just-
Actually, we have a special education-
Yeah.
Support staff secretary-
That payroll works.
And she is-
She's here from 7:30 to-
Yeah, so she works 35 hours a week, and then the payroll bookkeeper is 35 hours a week.
Okay, so that's not really part-time, that's still full-time with insurance and retirement. Okay, I just, I know, I was just surprised when I read it, and so I, I didn't know who else to ask, so I thought I would ask, so, okay, my second question is about the SAU and insurance. Do they get still 100% paid on their insurance, or they like the teachers where they get 80/20?
Yes, it is 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, so, hearing no more public participation, I'll move on to approval of minutes for January 4th, 2016 public session. Motion by Penny. Second by Jo. Any errors or omissions? Someplace, I'm not sure if this was, oh. Page five, at the very to, in the very top paragraph. Does that reflect how that vote went?
No, anyways, I voted against it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, I think it was a 3-2.
Yeah, so, it was Stan and, it was Mr. Frieder and Mrs. Moore and against, and it was the other three in favor. And then on the second paragraph, does that reflect the vote, Stan, for your?
Yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember, so, right.
Is your motion accurate in those minutes, Jo? Your amendment?
Uh, where are we at?
And the page five at the top.
Well, page four at the top is the amendment.
Oh, and it's again on this, on page five, yeah.
Well, because it was discussion, so then it went through the vote.
The one on page four should be taken up, probably. I, I'm not sure when that-
Well-
Well, no, no, it's good, it was just as how-
But, if I, if I may, we're playing with wording here, okay? If I'm reading this, Mrs. Moore made a motion that the board moved forward and send the budget to the budget for any of its current form. Mr. Petrie amended the motion to cut $89,000 from the bottom line. Is that an accurate amendment?
Yeah.
It is, I thought, I, okay.
Any other changes on these minutes? Okay, hearing then, I'll call for a vote in favor of approving these minutes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Um, sorry, aye.
All right. Minutes of January 7th public session. Motion by Penny. Second by Joel. Any changes or corrections? Okay, hearing then, I'll call for a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, so we'll leave the sealed minutes until later, and now we'll move on to financials.
I think that your first two reports that are in your packet would be, see, I'm not certain what order they're in, ACH lunch account, and this is the treasurer's cash report that shows that there's a reconciled cash balance as of December 31st of $16,715.46. These are the funds that parents pay through a debit process, and eventually what we'll do is we just go and we do an internal transfer with the treasurer, so that it goes into the general fund cash. So, that's really just for your information only. The second one is for the general checking, general cash account. Again, it's a reconciliation through December 31st, and this is the, the cash account that takes in all of the federal grants, all of the state monies, adequacy. That cash balance is $1,493, $493,752.54, as of December 31st. And again, that is for your information. Do you have questions?
On the revenue report?
No, and I was gonna proceed on the revenue report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Actually, line 14 shows a premium holiday revenue that we took in for $67,605. Just want to make you aware that this is the last year that we'll see any kind of a premium holiday from Health Trust. Retirees who contribute also to Health Trust, those people have also received a rebate based upon what their contribution is. Most things are tracking fairly well. Say, we took a little bit more in than anticipated under catastrophic aid, line 19. There are any questions?
On the, on the revenue report, line nine, the athletic gate receipts, does that reflect just basketball season? Or do you not know?
I believe, I believe so, I'm not thinking that there's anything that comes in for, for football, I think it's just athletic.
Is, is-
Basketball.
So, is football, do we charge for football games? Where does the money go?
Okay. Other questions on revenue? Next report, France's special revenue. You know, essentially, we have an allocation of about 1.3 million in federal funds. What we do is we approach the state when activities, we need activities on grants, and we actually go through a pre-approval process, and then the grant gets modified, and then those funds are collected as they are expended, and they're collected by the tenth of the following month, so. I think so far, you know, we're doing fairly well on that, as far as our grant activity.
Lori, on the last page, it says telephone cell, Twenty-First Century.
Which page, please?
On the fifteen. Do we pay for a cellphone for someone to, from?
Right, the Twenty-First Century is actually the grant written specifically for FAMMY.
Yeah.
That is an approved activity for the director and, I believe, three of his staff, so that they.
So, that, that's three phones?
Actually, it would be four, but it is, it is approved by the state. We have to support that.
Yeah, I'm just comparing, 'cause we always talk about the price of phone, so.
Right, and actually, that bill is specifically billed to FAMMY.
Okay.
And then lastly, is your year-to-date expenditure report for the general fund. You will notice that there are, you know, several negative variances in here that we are, you know, working with staff, with administrators to go and have those areas covered. Most things are tracking very well ahead. We have still a number of supplies that we do need to purchase. I think a good part of the teacher's supplies, the fifty-dollar allocation has been reimbursed, but I'm working with administrators to make certain that that moves along, so that they don't have to wait until May. Line one seventy-nine at the top of page seven, if I could just bring that to your attention. We do have a negative variance there of fifty-one thousand. That is for out-of-district placement that will be covering via line one sixty-three with contracted services.
Actually, there was a PO that was released today.
Right, so slightly less.
Exactly that.
But it will be covered through contracted services.
What, what line was that again?
One seventy-nine.
Line one seventy-nine, this report was ran on the fourteenth prior to the adjustment to the placement. I guess the point is, is that that negative variance will be covered through contracted services under line one sixty-three.
One fourteen is also over expended by fourteen thousand dollars. That's not gonna be much money. Special ed tutors.
We have tutors that come out of a district-wide line, so that might've been misapplied.
So, it just, it just moved to.
No, that should've been one another line.
You're talking a hundred and forty-one dollars?
So, wow, right there.
I'm sorry, yes.
Well, that's right, it's a hundred, they are, they were tutoring services through that payroll, that's the correct cost center.
I thought we did district-wide line.
Well, we, we do, but we also put in for a dollar, so we were allocated. We can make an adjustment on that. You'll notice that line one twelve does have tutors that are district-wide.
Okay.
We just left the one-dollar placeholder. That will be just correcting the cost center.
Out of here.
Yes.
Yeah, what, what is your, are the district, what's that made of right now?
I'm sorry?
Out of districts, out of districts and your special ed group? How many out of districts do we have?
We have, we have nineteen students out of District Three are result of court placements.
Nineteen, and how many, how many courts?
Three, are result.
Three.
Sorry, three, are result of a court placement.
And special ed students?
Two hundred and two Farmington students, previous number I had given you, I think, of two hundred and thirty-two. When I go through the program, I have to actually physically pull out those students that are Middleton students that have gone down the road, so we're sitting at about two hundred and two students that are Farmington, twenty-eight that are Middleton students that are getting an education here.
And what is the budget for the special ed? Like, we had three thirty-nine, three hundred and thirty-nine, three point three-nine million in the past.
We reduced it even going, that is going into next year.
I.
We reduced that even going into next year. We have some graduations, so that, I think we increased it just by eleven thousand dollars on one line, and then the other line remained almost flat, which would've been for Henry Wilson. And then we did, due to, and it's unfortunate, reaching recent court activity with some very young families, we put some money in a value one.
But it, you think it's gonna hold, I mean, it's hard to predict.
It's not, it's, we're doing our, our best to, to hold it where it is. You know, part of, as you know, part of the issue is, court makes a decision that they're moving, moving children out of the home and moving their children.
Thank you.
I, I just had a question, and I know I've asked this before, but if you could just, I'm, just must be forgetting, but summer school, do they, do we charge the, for summer school?
So, extended school year services are, are delivered to students that show the potential for regression and therefore need to work on their IEP goals, so that's offered to.
Okay, so that's what that summer school?
Correct.
Okay.
That's for special education students.
Okay.
And for hiring teachers and parent educators.
That's under a grant, too, right?
Nope, not under a grant, there is a line in.
It doesn't say. Okay, any other questions?
What's going on with the one sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, these copiers?
Essentially, more copies made than, than were projected. So, we have the bill, and we break it out into the cost center and.
So, perhaps my suggestion of printing back-to-back, we're not printing at all, might be helpful. Just saying. What is, do we pay, do we pay by?
I think a big piece of that, and I just have to say in the face of that being function twelve-hundred, that being special education, that there are some kind of procedures that have to be in place as far as copying IEPs and transferring files out and, and things like that. Sometimes not all of those documents, as much as we would love to be in a technology-rich age to send those off electronically, it's not always possible, so. But I understand, I understand your point about being more efficient on that.
I, I have a question. I think, was it point zero, was it half, half a cent a page, is that the, and do we pay for both sides, or how does that work as far as that contract?
Um.
If you remember.
Well, it depends, if it's black and white or color. I would have to take a look at if it was something like point oh-oh-two a page.
Is that the printed page, or?
That is, that's on.
Or is it the sheets?
You know, that's the surface, regardless of whether it's back or front. It's, it's whatever, whatever fleck of black hits the paper, then that's, what do we call it, the click, the click series or something? Yeah.
So, we ain't saving that, just papers?
So, the, but the, so those are just on copies, not necessarily, the paper's not included in, or the paper isn't?
No, the paper's always been included as part of our regular supply budgets.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay.
Actually, we've had, we have worked hard to get that down, 'cause it was much higher.
There are many districts in New Hampshire that are totally paperless, so I don't understand why we can't do that.
You gotta be able to see the page.
All right, so, moving on to warrant articles. So, I guess what I'll do is I'll just read through them, and then we, we didn't approve any of these, correct?
That's correct.
So, all right.
Gonna start with three? No, it doesn't matter.
Oh, wow, yeah, the big, yeah, well, no, 'cause the bottom line's still the same, we just have to allocate that. All right, so, first session of the annual meeting. You are hereby notified to meet at the Farmington High School Gymnasium in Farmington, New Hampshire, on Saturday, the thirtieth day of January two thousand sixteen at nine AM. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of warrant articles two through eight. Warrant articles may be amended subject to the following limitations. One, warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended. B, should that be two, or?
Should be.
Yeah. Or one should be A. Warrant articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote on the main motion, and C, no warrant articles will be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article. Second session of the annual meeting is voting. Further, you are hereby notified to meet at the Farmington Town Hall on Tuesday, the eighth day of March two thousand sixteen, to vote by official ballots on articles one to eight as amended. Polls open at eight AM and remain open continually until seven PM to act upon the following subjects. Article one, to choose the following school district officers. A, two school board members, three-year term each. B, one moderator, one-year term. C, one clerk, one-year term. D, one treasurer, one-year term. Article two, shall the district accept in place on file the reports of the auditors, agents, committees, and officers chosen to conduct the prudent affairs of the district. So, do we have to, like, vote on each one of these, or can we just approve them?
You, you do, you do vote on each of your warrant articles, yes.
Article, Article one, we have to.
We don't approve Article one and two.
We don't approve Article one or two, though, do we?
No.
No, that's why it doesn't have anything there.
Okay, Article three, shall the Farmington School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling fifteen million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be seventeen million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand and nineteen dollars, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Farmington School District or by law of the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty thirteen, ten, and sixteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note, this operating budget warrant article does not include appropriations contained in any other warrant articles. Are we recommending this article?
Looks like we already did.
We already did.
But we didn't.
Yes, we did.
The only one we didn't recommend was the bus one, I thought.
Oh, and the other one we have to do is the, I'll just keep reading it for the public anyway.
Article five, you need to take a consideration.
Yeah, and we have to choose the account for Article seven. So, Article four, shall the Farmington School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Farmington School District and the Farmington Education Support Professionals United, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels, year two thousand sixteen-seventeen, ninety-four thousand, seven fifty-three, year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, twenty thousand, five hundred and one. The school board recommends this, Article three to two. Article five.
Hold on, that's what I have a question about. That's the vote on the ratification. That's, I thought we had to vote separately to put it on the warrant. And then that's.
We can still recommend it for the warrant, right.
But, I don't.
I don't think we did.
I don't, I didn't think that we, that we put the ratification vote on there.
No, it shouldn't be the ratification vote, it should be whether or not we recommend it for the, for the warrant.
It's your recommendation for the article.
Okay, so, all in favor of recommending Article four as written? Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Stan, second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed to it. This doesn't make any difference, it's gotta go on.
Articles.
Let me change the four to one.
Thank you.
Article five, shall the Farmington School District, if Article four is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article four cost items only.
A motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Article five?
Aye.
Opposed? Article six, shall the voters of the Farmington School District vote to authorize the school board?
Re-enter.
Yeah, re-enter into a four-year lease agreement for eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the purpose of leasing one school bus for people transportation, which is spelled wrong also, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand and eighty dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause.
So, moved.
Motion by Penny, second, by Stan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article seven.
Yeah.
Yep, sorry, five-zero.
So, just point of clarification, the, it's the school board, authorize the school board to enter into?
Yes.
Okay.
For some reason, spell check.
I know, and then transportation spelled wrong.
Spell check, I'm not picking this up, I don't know why.
Article seven, shall the Farmington School District vote to raise and appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the outdoor athletic facilities capital reserve fund established in April of nineteen ninety-nine or a different CRF per the school board, this sum to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first with no amount raised from taxation. So, the question is, what, where do we wanna?
The buildings and grounds.
That would be my.
The buildings and grounds gave you the most flexibility.
Okay, and we can do that.
That'd be my motion, too. That was the capital reserve established in nineteen ninety-three.
Okay.
That's my motion, too.
All right, so Penny's motion is to put it in the buildings and ground capital reserve account established in nineteen ninety-three. Second by Stan, any discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is a good, good idea at this time. That's fifty thousand we can use to reduce taxation. 'Cause that's where it'll go, otherwise.
All right, all in favor of recommending this motion?
No.
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 So, the vote, final vote is?
Three to two.
Three no?
Three no.
Three no, and two.
Two-three.
Yes. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to require that the annual budget and all special warrant articles have a tax impact as determined by the governing, which is spelled wrong, put an N in there, that's okay. Shall contain an notation stating the estimated tax impact of the article. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No opposed? All right. Article nine, to transact, I mean, we don't really have to do that, right? No.
So, just point of clarification, do we have to then approve Article three because the vote is, to approve the budget different than the vote to approve the warrant, like we did with the other thing?
'Cause that was the vote on the budget, was four-one.
Four-one was the vote on the budget.
That's just to recommend it.
Is this the same situation as the parent negotiations of the budget, where we had a vote on it again?
It should be.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've voted no on a budget before, but voted yes to put it on the warrant, 'cause I was defeated in the regular vote, so.
So, um, does anyone wanna make a motion on Article three?
So, moved.
Motion by Joel? Second by Kathy, Joe, Penny? All in favor of putting Article three on the warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Same, so still same.
It's just a protest vote, doesn't mean anything.
All right, Jo. Great.
Consistent.
Okay, so now we, we are back to the bone of contention on the eighty-nine thousand. Where we want that to come out of, because we're gonna have to do a fore-deliverance session. What is it, eighty-nine thousand, seventy-five, I think?
So, if I'm understanding correctly, your original amendment that we approved tonight in the minutes was just to take it from the bottom line. It wasn't necessarily just to take it out of that SAU line.
Well, to take it out of the SAU line.
But that's not, that's, that's why I asked.
That wasn't your motion then.
Well, that's why we asked.
Well, but that, it was, it was a single line at the time of the Farmington budget. There, there are several lines. Well, it depends whatever, whatever she decides, but it's, it is a... No, there, there is, in the past, it's been a placeholder. Matter of fact, that's exactly what it was called. One line in the Farmington School District budget. It was a placeholder.
Stan, go ahead.
My recollection of the conversation, which may or may not be true, was that when Joe brought it up, it was to make up for the SAU flaws. And so, yeah, I think your intention was for the SAU, but then the explanation was it doesn't matter because it's all in one budget, so we have to do it from the bottom line. But I, but I do think the motion might have reflected that. I don't remember what your exact motion was, but our conversation was, before the motion was made, our conversation was...
The amendment doesn't reflect it.
Yeah, I know, and we were talking about that.
The conversation following it reflects it.
Right.
But not, not the motion, not the amendment.
So Lori, are you looking for the board to give you specific lines on where to cut that eighty-nine thousand dollars? Is that...
The function at this... Yes.
Yeah, I thought the budget made it kind of...
Well, there's not much choice.
Get rid of those expensive copy machines.
What's the SAU line?
Go back to tablets. Start.
Digital, digital.
Hold on, I do have it.
Well, administrative assistant.
What line was that, one?
Which one?
The SAU line.
But it's my understanding, if I'm correct, though, because of the motion, we don't have to just look at the SAU line, we can look at the entire budget.
That's correct.
Yep, we can.
That is correct.
Okay. Then I have some questions. And they're specifically for you, Diana. And they're about the special ed teacher structure at Henry Wilson. We have, how is it set up now? One, one case manager per grade level? How, how does that work?
Yeah, let me, um... So, right now, there are two pre-K case managers. One of them also functions as a really supporting services coordinator. You have a kindergarten, special education teacher case manager, first, second, third, and then another individual that also works as, um, kind of in a behavior capacity, working with students who are special education students and students that are not special education students. You know, I, I feel that this conversation also, if you're looking at special education in terms of valid view specifically, also...
No, I actually asked Henry Wilson.
Oh, Henry Wilson, my apologies, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
It was good information.
So Henry Wilson, we have a, a case manager at each grade level. We have a life skills classroom teacher case manager, and also positive behavior lab teacher as well, and so that's the...
So seven case managers at that building?
Correct.
No building coordinator?
No building coordinator.
And who does the building coordination?
Case managers do their own arrangement of meetings, paperwork.
I'm going to ask you a question, you might not be prepared to answer, but I'd like the breakdown of how many students are on each caseload.
I can give you, I think, about what we have right now. Fourth grade, fifteen, and I don't think I've separated them out entirely right now.
Separated them out, you mean between middle and bottom?
Because we have some students that'll be eighth grade, but will be with life skills. And so in some, I, I don't think I've pulled them out entirely, and I'm going to give you my preliminary numbers, and I would ask that I be allowed to double check my figures. Fifth grade, fifteen, life skills, we have eight. Sixth grade, fifteen. Seventh grade, six, but I think one more has come in recently, so that could be up to seven. Eighth grade, twelve. The positive behavior lab, three students right now, but one more that might be moving into program.
When you say moving in, they'll be coming off one caseload?
They'd be coming off one caseload, going into another, yes, correct.
And the same with seventh grade? Or you're talking about a move in just out of district?
I think the one just in, coming in from another district, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Um, at the budget hearing, I heard Ms. Olden say that we could go with two nurses and, and be sufficient legally, is that an option?
Can we?
I think it is. I wouldn't want to do that, but...
Well, you can easily pull up the, I have, in fact, I think I have a book by...
The state minimum standards I had to...
I brought it for the last meeting, but I didn't bring it to the meeting. Huh? Under ED rules?
To an medical assistant or something, that effect.
Yeah.
Could be covered in all the buildings. One was at Henry Wilson, the nurse was at Henry Wilson, maybe the high school.
I just want to know if that's an option or not, because, I mean, it's what we're doing now. Joe?
Barely getting by.
Okay.
I'm listening.
It's strapping Valley View nurse, the high school nurse. Having to, you know, try and...
Well, this was the nurse that, that spoke up, so. That was out of...
What line is the administrative assistant to the superintendent at the SAU?
It's page two right here. Uh, line...
Okay, you got the pink sheet?
Yeah, I got the pink one, I got the other one, too.
Line seven, thirty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars.
Right, well, I'm going to make a motion that we just cut that position.
To me, um... I just wanted to know if we could just have a full conversation before we make motions.
Oh, sure.
Do you mind?
No.
Because there's a lot of other questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
No?
Well, I don't know, was Penny done? Was that it, was that all you had?
I was, yeah, well, I thought you were looking up that ED law.
Oh, I, yeah, I can, sorry. While I'm doing that, the, and this is probably a question for Mr. Gezokas. Two and a half guidance counselors at the high school, correct? Wha, wha, what does that look like? When you say half guidance counselors, are there other responsibilities the other half of the day, or just they leave? They leave, okay. And we currently have three guidance counselors at Henry Wilson?
Two guidance counselors and a crisis counselor.
And how many, um, how many, so that crisis counselor, do they have specific students assigned to them, or there's a crisis and she's there, or is it specifically...
It's a little bit of both. She does have students that she meets with, I'm, I'm, I'm unaware of the exact caseload. I know of a couple of specific students that she spends a good deal of time with, but...
You know, I wonder if we could get away with a half there, with, with reduced enrollments. Because I do remember looking that state minimum standards were one guidance counselor per every five hundred kids. No, three hundred kids, I believe it was, three hundred. So...
In the guidance at the hos, at the high school, does that also include the transition specialist? Is she working along with guidance now?
She's, she's also, she's also departing, if I remember correctly.
Joe?
Uh, one of the things is HICEP. They can get those services elsewhere, like Rochester and Dover, where they have in the past. That's something that we're not required to do, but... Paying for them.
Is HICEP?
Well, does the transportation need to be factored into that? That if you do want the pupils participating, you may not be required to provide the transportation, but you do want to get them in the program and get them there so that they are successful.
Well, you know, that, that...
So it's not a complete savings.
This is, this isn't, you know, they, these kids need to pay attention when, when, when it's free. And we know that it's not free. They, they need to, they need to pay attention to their studies before they get to that point. So... What, what I'm getting at is what is required versus what is given.
I mean, I, I...
In other words, if some things are by, by statute?
I understand.
Would you like to hear from Mr. Gezokas, if he would mind?
The HICEP program, Joe, that we run is different from, I think, what you're, you're speaking of. A student can, or a person can go get their GED, their HICEP, um, for, uh, in a Farmington here, Rochester, or have you. Our program is specifically designed for high school students who are age sixteen or older, who have, or are a year behind their peers. Students can't go into there until they're sixteen, and they have to be behind one year. At the age of eighteen, they can certainly, their option is to withdraw from school, drop out, if you will, and then seek their HICEP at that point. So they're two different programs. And, and so what our program does is also allow students to sort of be dual enrolled. So they're in the HICEP program, but they're able to take classes here at Farmington High School, they're able to take classes at Lakes Region Tech as part of their program.
Is it required?
It's not required, no.
Okay, thank you.
Stan?
Is there just one guidance counselor at Valley?
Can you do that now?
I, let me just double check it. So, so the, the salary line does not include the FICA and all of that, right?
For...
For...
Yes, SAU?
Yeah.
I saw you had the pink sheet, so...
Yeah, line seven.
Right, and that's why I was just, I was going through the numbers.
Did we say it was eighteen percent last meeting?
Well, you've got the salary, you have the FICA, New Hampshire retirement, um, the health and dental benefits.
Yeah.
So the entire package comes up to fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Okay.
How much, I'm sorry.
Fifty-seven thousand...
Fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
What was the, how, how did you arrive at that figure as compared to the salary line? What was the percentage?
The salary, um...
Benefits.
Benefit pack.
And benefits, FICA, New Hampshire retirement, health insurance.
Number you, percentage you used? Or you just...
Let's see, what did I say? FICA and New Hampshire retirement is what, eighteen point eight-two percent? And then, um, it's in terms of dollars for health and dental based upon qualifying. So it's not a percentage of health and dental.
What, what's retirement now? What's it, thirteen cents?
Eleven point one seven.
Are you able to look at the budget and do that for each position? If we were to throw one other one out, would you?
What? What? What?
Well, you, you just gave us what the total savings would be if we eliminated that position.
Because it was one line, right.
Okay.
Give her the line.
So what line of the budget?
Uh, the line is, is, actually, it's line one, the transition specialist.
Okay, so...
One of the first lines.
Isn't the SAU budget?
No.
There is no SAU budget.
SAU line.
Uh, let's see, let me figure that out for you.
How many case managers do we have in the district while she's figuring that out?
A minute here.
I've heard seven. I heard seven at Henry Wilson and three at Valley View, but I wasn't sure if that was it.
What was the?
How many case managers in the district?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Special education teachers, case managers.
I'll have that figure for you in a minute, Mr. Shagnon.
Joe, that's eleven per, basically, roughly.
Roughly. It doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, obviously, it doesn't work out that way, you have some grades...
Yeah.
The entire package, you're referring to the transition specialist, would be fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So what happens if we're over?
Come out of the three to twenty, if that's...
Well, we're going to have to make some more cuts anyways, so.
Yeah, but we already gave the budget to the...
No, that's, that's, we're just giving lines right now, that's where it's coming from. It's actually a exercise in futility. Because it's still bottom line.
Instead of eliminating, we could also do a halftime position.
Well, if we can't take those point eight, Secretary, I know you want to do one entirely, but if we couldn't reduce the point eight down to, so there, there's no insurance and benefits, and we, we...
Yeah. I mean, I, may I speak to that? Would that be? If I look at the people that are only point eight position, we look at what they are actually doing. Their jobs are very, very unique in that it does involve, very specifically, you know, state information, special education information. I'm just going to talk on the surface, you know, New Hampshire retirement, federal tax laws, 403B. Those are, are not, um, pieces of qualities and capabilities and responsibilities that can just go and get moved over to, you know, another person who's in another clerical position. Very, very, I don't want to call them unique, but they're very finite skills in, in learning that. They're not easily transferable.
Do they need a cert certificate or a certification for it to do that?
No, I mean, it's just a considerable amount of practice. Neither does a, a secretarial support either, so. So in terms of catastrophic aid for special education, I mean, it's...
I'm not suggesting we remove the people or change people, I'm just saying we reduce their hours so that they're...
And I guess my response would be is that, that... The hours that they have right now, I mean, in terms of being able to keep, keep track of it, and then change Medicaid, our catastrophic aid, all the state reports, anything to do with, you know, terrorist shooting, anything that's coming through with NESUS. I mean, you know, there are a lot of pieces and parts that, anything that I ask her to do, you know, that's, that's on top of anything else that she's already working on. So, you know, invoices, keeping track of the, you know, these bills. I mean, and it, it's a substantial amount of information that needs to be said.
The parents work directly with the kids, and we cut them for...
Yeah, and I wish we wouldn't do that either, I mean...
Right, we're saying that now, we're, we're now in a hard place, so why can't we do it to these people? Until such a time as we can afford it.
But if we did a halftime for any of the ones that we've thrown out there, or two of them, by the looks of it, we more than... We'd make some goals.
And the reason I made that particular recommendation was because there's no SAU meetings anymore. There's no Middleton School Board meetings anymore. And we're going to talk later on about everything just being put in a Google Drive. I mean, I, I just thought her, the workload for that particular position, isn't what it used to be.
That's not one of the two point eight people, is it?
No.
No, so that would just be her whole, that would just be the administrative assistant to the superintendent, would just eliminate that, that position. And then we would have to ask the others to, to step up, see how it works out.
Why don't we give the, why don't we make all three people halftime below the benefit line so that they, we don't have to pay the benefits and the insurance for three of them? And then we have an administrative assistant that's part-time and two other people that are part-time.
That makes sense.
We wouldn't throw people out of work, exactly, entirely at least. Try to reduce them.
But the volume of work is still there. I, I, I realize that we're, we're saying that, you know, with Middleton departing, the payroll is not a high-volume payroll. It's five bus drivers. It's, it's more, maybe more affected on this other position with.
Oh, I was talking overall, choosing three, three of the highlights that we just highlighted and changing them. Not any, just at the SAU.
Can it come out of the line, like, it doesn't have to come out specific people. It can be a group, like, you know, twelve hundred or, or eleven hundred. Can you do it that way? Or does it have to be?
I'm not certain what I'm, what I'm in for here. I'm not certain I understand where you're going.
No, well, you've got eleven hundred, which is what, salaries for pairs. Just, just to, don't get nervous. It's just an example. All right? That's, that's an eleven hundred position, right? And twelve hundred, well, twelve hundred, actually. It doesn't have to be, like, you got three hundred forty-one thousand for that line, one seventeen.
In the long run.
You don't have to, you don't have to be specific. And you could, there's, uh, it should be less work for the secretaries at the high schools and the Henry Wilson and Valley View. You know, we get, we, we got less kids, so it should, at some point, somebody's gotta give. Of course, nobody wants to give up their job, but go to lesser amount of time.
I think, I think we're scanning the whole thing. It's not just.
No, that's the interesting, I think we did already, a secretarial position across the three schools was cut in three in this budget.
Correct, that is correct.
How many we got now?
Two at Valley View, three at Henry Wilson, and how many at the high school? Three at the high school?
And actually, it's not quite three, isn't it? More like two and a half? The other person already, right, that half person is under thirty hours. And no summer hours.
I know one of the cuts was special ed district-wide in our original budget. That accounted for Middleton special ed leaving, correct?
Correct.
What was that? I didn't hear that coming.
The, there was a district-wide special ed cut for Middleton leaving.
So what, how much money we got? We got way over though.
Well, and just, just for information, you have to have health services provided at each building. It doesn't have to be a nurse. It has to be, it talks about an LPN, talks about a nurse's assistant. In the absence of a nurse, it says somebody with first aid, CPR, cert.
Okay. Yeah. Could be a teacher with a certification in CPR. I mean.
Well, I think.
Have to be somebody.
I don't think that's.
Not saying yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's not real clear. It's more clear on guidance. Guidance is five hundred, by the way, not at your level, three hundred at your level, five hundred, both elementary levels. So, I mean, I don't know if, you know, if we're expected just to look at that SAU money, but.
Well, it doesn't matter because we didn't make the motion. It was the bottom line.
But I, I, I'll tell you, I have to be honest, three to, you know, I know it's a behavior thing, but three people on a caseload, six people on a caseload is, I wonder if that's really money well-spent.
Is this something that we want them to, to go back and look at? And, I mean, Diana to go back and look at the caseloads and see if there's someplace there as well? I mean, depending on what happens at deliberative session, we're gonna have to come up with, or not come up with more money.
I don't think this is set in stone either.
I don't believe it is either.
I don't either.
So it actually doesn't make any difference. It's gonna be bottom line in the end.
I know, but she needs something for her state report, and that's the twenty-fifth, so.
Well, if you, if you talk about, you know, we've, we've made it, we've moved, we're moving the SAU to the, to the campus. That's already been decided.
It's twenty-one?
If we can save on the insurance, that's another thirty.
It's eighteen hundred.
Well, the committee's exploring campus options only.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that, because that's the will of this board, is to move the SAU to this campus.
It's twenty, what is it, twenty-one grand?
As of when?
One, one.
As soon as possible.
I made the motion that they only explore campus options and.
But we have that on our.
But the, but don't forget the move is gonna cost some money to.
Right.
But we still have unexpended funds in the SAU budget.
So if you look at, I mean, I'm just, if you're looking at next year, if you're looking at.
Sixty, I think.
You know, you're looking at twenty-one, six for rental. If, if we go with Kathy and she makes a motion to eliminate the administrative assistant position, that's fifty-seven, nine-nine-eight. This seventy-nine, five, seventy-nine, six, right there. We're getting close.
All right, so I'll make the motion to eliminate the administrative assistance position, line seven in the, in the SAU portion of the budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, one, four. You in favor of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Five, zero.
I didn't catch that.
Eliminated. It was five, nothing.
Five, zero, okay.
All right. I made my cut, I made cut. Who's turn?
So I'll move to reduce the other two point eight people down to whatever the hours would be that would remove the benefits and insurance. Point five, maybe.
Well, Transition Specialist is, you might be able to do just that position, or half of that position.
What's a Transition Specialist? What line is that? Cause we don't, we wouldn't have to fill it. It's not.
That's line one.
We wouldn't have to lay anybody off. We just don't fill it.
There you go. Wow, you're gonna, you're gonna, you've got another three hundred grand. Difficult.
So then, would you say that the balance of that, you're looking, you started out with eighty-nine, nine-seventy-five, you've just cut out fifty-seven thousand nine ninety-eight. So would you wanna say that the thirty-one thousand nine seventy-seven is part of that line?
Transition.
Transition Specialist.
Yeah, we could do that. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on that?
I just think the flavor of the whole thing was that it'd be taken from the SAU budget. I know it's not reflected in the minutes, but I would rather see it come out from there.
Well, there's no.
Cause we, we already have three hundred thousand dollars to deal with on the other side, unless we can put it back in, but.
It doesn't matter, cause it's all gonna come out of the same pot.
I understand that, but still.
The SAU is not an SAU anymore, as of this budget.
In the meantime, we can go home and keep looking.
Yeah, we can. It's, it's, you know, our, and look at the, what our mission is, and that's to educate kids.
All right, so this motion on the floor, any more discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so four, one.
Which one do you vote for?
Line one, Transition Specialist, to take the remainder out, which is how much?
Thirty-one?
Thirty-one thousand nine seventy-seven.
So Joel and Stan were both opposed?
No, I'm, I'm for it.
In favor?
It's four to five.
Okay. Now, any, anything else on that? I think we covered that. SAU board, school board packets. Stan?
Oh, you want me to just?
Yeah, I'm gonna let.
I just, I, you know, we need to have a policy and sometimes we get them on email, sometimes we get them in a, in a folder. I, I just wanna to either, either, I'll volunteer to write it myself, but if we wanna have a committee, that's fine, but we need to, I, we're gonna suggest that we go totally paperless and digital and that we have some standard procedures so that we all always get it the same way. And we get it on time and we get it in an appropriate manner.
Are you on, you're on the state, the DOE's technology?
Yeah.
Team, do they have, what is their, what is their policy?
Wouldn't, we don't have one at the DOE for any, for any, not that we don't have one, I mean, for schools. The schools have their own because it's all.
School Board Association's probably.
Okay, yeah.
There are many Google, Google Apps districts, and we are one of them. And it seems to me to be silly to be a Google Apps for Education district and not promote it. And administrators should be using it because they should be modeling the behavior of the digital age. And if we're not doing it because of fear, that's a bad excuse. And if we're not doing it because we don't know what's going on, that's a bad excuse. We certainly can save tons of paper and tons of printing if we just made a commitment to go digital. And we have to do it in a, in a way that is uniform and consistent in how we name files, where we can find files, where the public can find files. It's, it will be easy if we use a, a system and design it. So that's, that's my suggestion.
A motion that Stan take that on?
I'll second that. Any more discussions?
That was easy.
Now, wait a minute, what's Stan taking on?
So he's just going to explore policies for us. Because right now, I mean, I will, I, I will still print, print it out, but I can do that with my, my own money. But today, I will say, I went in and I went to, and I found all the documents, but the only thing that I could get to, Lori, was the agenda. The rest, it was all locked. So I couldn't print any.
They have been locked. They have been locked.
Yeah.
We talked about that.
Okay.
They've been locked intentionally.
Okay.
And who was the "we" that talked about it?
I spoke with the individual who has a responsibility to post it on the website.
Well, we can, we can, we can discuss that later. Okay. Thanks. So did we vote on having Stan do that?
I don't think so, but.
All in favor of Stan doing that? Anybody opposed? Joel?
He's indifferent.
Okay, unanimous.
He's indifferent.
Okay.
No, I said aye.
Oh, okay.
So just an update on the SAU space for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen.
Joe, do you wanna start where you all met, and I'll pick up from there?
These minutes are gonna have to be approved, and I'll put them together the way it should be.
Okay.
You know, but, and we can discuss whatever we can discuss tonight.
We met and we went and looked at the, at the current SAU building. We looked at the Little Red Schoolhouse. We looked at the Annex Building, and we looked at the FLA. The, the current SAU offers fifty-nine hundred thirty square feet. The Annex Building has a total square footage of forty-two hundred and fifty-eight square feet. And the FLA has nineteen hundred and twenty square feet. So as we walked through Larry and Steve and Rich, and myself and Kathy met for the Little Red Schoolhouse, we really kind of surprisingly decided to go in and look at the Annex. And I, I think it was resoundingly that that would probably be the best possible place. It has pretty good square footage. It's got a full basement for storage. It's already wired. It might take some retrofitting, maybe some windows into the basement. It had a few drainage issues. You guys can jump in wherever you want. Steve?
Do you wanna go up to the microphone, I'll speak to you.
Which is the Annex?
The Annex is right in front of Henry Wilson, as you're going up the driveway there to the right.
Yeah, it's kinda ugly building, and it probably needs some vinyl siding to make it a little nicer. We also did look in Henry Wilson at classroom and office space there and quickly decided that that just wouldn't be a good environment. But we did, did look at that as well, which you left off the list.
Yeah, thank you. It wasn't on my list until Larry.
Yeah. So, yeah, the Annex surprisingly was a lot bigger than I thought. It's not the prettiest inside, but we're looking at remodel work anyways. Quite a bit of room in the basement. It's full height, you know, concrete floors and everything. So I think it would need some ventilation, but probably, you know, in my mind, it was offices upstairs and conference and break room downstairs, as well as storage and stuff downstairs as well. And it seemed like there would probably be enough room. The square footage was pretty close to where they are now.
Yeah, and part of the other discussion was that there are currently eleven offices at the SAU building that we have now. And two of them are Larry's office and Bonnie's office, and they're not necessarily SAU employees. So finding them a space either in the FLA or in the school space was another option that we talked about. What'd you say, in the trunk?
In his truck. No, we wouldn't do that to you.
There's an old camper for sale up under eleven. The Annex is currently in use. It's currently in use by the IT department, about half of the upstairs. If you walk in, there's an area that has a couple school-style bathrooms, boys and girls. And then there's the bigger section that has, it looks like it's split about in half. Half of it is storage for custodial supplies, which will go up and down as to how much stuff is in there depending on when orders come in. The other half is the IT department. My thought, after looking at the FLA as we did too, was that there'd be room to move IT probably to the FLA and then move those FLA functions possibly into Henry Wilson. Sounded like, talking with some people, that moving FLA functions, sorry, the high-tech that's in.
The HICEP?
Yeah, the HICEP, that's in the FLA building. Moving that to the high school was not a good idea, but possibly moving it into some of vacated classroom space at Henry Wilson might be an option. Or moving IT maybe into some vacated classroom space, but that would require.
Retrofitting.
Well, they're, they're gonna need a lot more electrical outlets because of what they do.
We looked at one fifth-grade classroom. There were two outlets in the, in the room and.
Yeah, there's definitely not gonna be enough electrical for what IT needs. There may not be enough electrical in the FLA for, I mean, cause they have to, you know, stage a lot of equipment at one time, so they're gonna need some power. Not all the time, but there are times when they're setting up a new batch of systems that they need to be able to plug in a lot of stuff.
All right, Stan.
We may could probably ask Larry the questions since he's a facilities manager.
What's the square footage of the Annex minus the square footage that the IT take up?
I don't have the numbers. You can probably estimate.
Larry, can you, can you go to the mic too? Because I have a question I'm gonna ask you anyway, and, and I want people to hear your answer.
So whatever you like, so, so if we do thirty times thirty. Basement, so it's two by thirty-one? They're about a thousand square feet, I'd say. And the size of the FLA building was just under two thousand square feet. There are times when IT needs a lot of space to set up, when you're staging equipment. Then there's times that they don't need as much space because the equipment's back in on the classroom. So they're not always using all of the space that they have, but there are times when they need to set up. And it could be that those times that they're prepping computers are scheduled when school's not in session, so they can set up in open area in the school too.
It seems to me that the, I mean, if you're comparing the Annex square footage with the, with the current SAU building's square footage, and a lot of that is unnecessary space. And obviously, you grow into the space you have, but I, I wonder if you actually calculated how much space they need to work, not how much space they're taking up. Cause there's a difference there. You know, they have multiple bathrooms, they have kitchens, and they have, you know, separate copy rooms that are certainly not necessary. So that's, that space doesn't have to be included in the need space.
Well, the, the Annex is smaller by roughly fifteen hundred square feet, smaller than what they have now. We were looking at, in my mind, if we put the break room and the conference room downstairs, it puts all the office space on one floor. So you're like one copy room. The bathrooms as their size right now could probably be smaller. I don't know how much space it'd be saving, cause the way they're situated in the entrance there. There is a lot of storage space at the SAU that is not efficiently used, primarily because they don't have to, there wasn't enough space. I had some questions on record storage. There's a lot of paper that's stored. I wonder how much can be digitized, which is another project and a cost, but it's one, once you start that process, if everything's digital, then you don't need to store it.
Our paper supply, our storage will grow if we get.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, see, I don't know how long you need to keep stuff, and then how frequently some stuff is accessed, cause there was, you're talking about how much needs to be stored in close proximity to the SAU versus how much can be further away. Because if there's stuff that you might access it once a year, it doesn't have to be in the same proximity as the stuff you're getting into every week or once a month. So, and that's your questions, I just didn't have the answer to. But it did look like in the Annex, my gut feeling was that there was probably enough room for all the office space and an efficient use of the space to store everything that you're storing, as far as records. As far as records.
And the IT? Or did they have to?
No, I wouldn't think the IT would fit there too.
A question for Larry.
Yeah, Larry, so historically, the basement in the Annex has had a lot of water issues.
Has water issue that would have to be addressed for the door they, that was put in for the entrance down. It's just a walk-in door.
Yeah.
That has the biggest water issue that I can see is because the location of the door was put so that it funnels the water right into the door.
That's where all the water comes into that building? It doesn't come through the, through the basement walls?
I, I've seen it mostly just around that door.
It's been a real issue there before. In water, it's been, it's been.
Well, there's, there's an air issue down there now is the way it is, yes. Mildew.
Yeah.
It's a basement.
Yeah.
There's no ventilation to speak of now. It's one space heated down there.
Was part of the committee, did the committee look at, I know there was a conversation at some point, someone's going to check into it, the ability to add on to the former FLA?
Yes, because looking at that, we found it, it's not on a slab. It's on a foundation. And it could be extended out towards the.
Tennis courts.
Extended towards the tennis courts. That was the. And the, or back.
Also mentioned, building up instead of out.
Keep it a block.
Yeah, it was a foundation on, uh.
No basement.
There's no basement.
Okay.
Yeah?
It's something that came up when Valley View was being built, the parking. Is there, and the areas being looked at, also assessing space for parking for the people working there as well as those accessing the offices for business?
Right now, at the Annex, there's room for about four cars parked out there. Where this, where IT and stuff parks now.
At the bottom of the building, there's some. And there's certainly room to pave several parking spaces on the side of the building. People park on the grass there now.
Right.
But there would be room to extend the parking lot there.
Addition used to be people parking.
I just want to make sure it's part of the conversations.
The parking lot at the SAU is large right now. I mean, what's the high number of cars you think you'd see at the SAU?
We've had, I mean, when we have an admin meeting, you're talking all the principals come, they'll grant it some of that, depending on where we are. When we've had outside consultants in, we've. I'm trying to think of the last Friday.
But yeah, 12 cars, easy.
Yeah. Easily 12. On a regular basis, I would say.
There's certainly room for another eight there.
I, I wasn't looking that it'd be a problem. I just wanted to make sure it was taken into consideration.
Yeah, it was. What does Henry Wilson look like in front of it during the day now? Is it full path?
Okay, any other questions about space, Joe?
Well, I, I don't have a question. I have a comment. The population of the students in New Hampshire is going down even more as we speak. I believe it was, uh, the statement was made today by DOE was 169,500 students. So there's a steady decline. So that means more and more space is going to become available within the schools. You know, whether that's next week or 10 years from now. I mean, it's something to look at.
Right.
That, that I, you know, it's something to think about if we can get by a few years. You know, with a, a little bit more cramped space, you know, it's probably. And plus, another thing, there's going to be pressure from the legislature. If you've got three buildings, it's going to be pressure to get into buildings. Because it, you know, their, the state is looking very, or the legislature is looking very seriously at making you consolidate. Because, you know, of course, we're, we're fighting with building aid and it's just not there. It's because of what we've done in the past to fund those. You know, we got a tale that's about, that's the paying on the bond and, and the interest. I think it's about $42 million. And until, and it's going to, it's going down, but like a couple of years, I think it'd be 35 million. But it's, it's very slow. And that means we're about, as a matter of fact, I heard today, it's 300 and about 350 million dollars in things to do. You know, build different buildings around the state to build. There's about 450 buildings in the, in the state, you know, at schools. But that's going to, you're going to get pressure to consolidate.
So where does the committee go from here?
I guess we're looking for some direction as to where to go from here.
And is this the board that does, we can do that here because it's for the following year?
It's the following year.
Well, we got, we got plenty of time to.
We just can't put it on hold.
Yeah, so my, my thoughts is, what do we have for costs? Do we have a, we'd, we'd move for.
Do we want to choose cost it out or?
Look at a feasibility of the, my recommendation, I can't speak for the rest of the committee, would be to look at the Annex, the viability and the cost to retrofit that. Make sure that we've got a plan to move the current residence someplace else. And see what it would take to bring that building up to stuff. Like I said, it's not the prettiest inside or out. But it seems structurally sound from a cursory plan.
I guess I'd like to see us explore that, the same cost of what it would take to convert FLA into a space we need. Because, you know, we're talking, six people used to work at the former FLA. And with the cut we just made, we'll be down to eight people, uh, SAU employees. You know, the, the basement scares me.
Yeah, me too, yeah.
I mean.
We just have to make sure that you have a really good ventilation and dehumidifier.
I think we should look at the cost for, to, to, to get both to where we need them to meet our needs and see what the cost comparison is.
Some of the square footage of the FLA is taken up by the heating system, which is on the main floor. At the Annex, which looks like a fairly new, modern heating system, it's in the basement. So at the FLA, because there's no basement, the heating system and the fuel storage is in the building. So that takes up some of that square footage.
Yeah, it's in that little closet, yeah.
Yeah. Some of that square footage is taken up by bathrooms, public bathrooms for the ballfields.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought you limit, you, you added that in, but not the concession?
Right.
I didn't add in the concession, that's separate. I was saying bathrooms are back-to-back, peek-to-back with the inside bathrooms.
And nobody really wanted to lose those, especially those, the concession maybe, but the bathrooms, we certainly didn't want to lose because you can set a concession on a table. But, uh, so the square footage is, the SAU, when it was above Town Hall, was 5,200 square feet. They moved into 5,900 square feet. The Annex is about 4,250 square feet. So it's still a considerable downsized from where they are to downsized from where they were before they went up to Charles Street. You know, and the size of the Charles Street building was a function of the building. They didn't add on to create the space. That was the size of it. But it changed from 5,200 before that. Partly laid out, but it was 5,200.
Yeah, and I guess I'll go back to Stan's comment. What, you know, it's, it's great to know where we're, where, what we're functioning in now, but what do we really need for square footage? You know, I would argue that the building we're in now is just way too big. I don't think we need half that space. I really don't. I, I just would like to see the cost of adding on to the FLA.
Versus retrofitting the Annex.
Well, no, in comparison to what we have to do to the Annex. Because I don't know, it just sounds like we need to do a lot more.
Is that a tough task? That's not too much to task you with, is it, Larry?
Probably, contacts.
Okay. Yeah.
As long as you don't disband.
Thinking of talking RFP, putting out bids.
Right.
For two different projects.
I mean, how do we determine what we need for space? There must be.
There must be some formula somewhere that says.
Angie, did you say, want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of challenge the notion of you have need to locate eight people in that one building together still. Just try to open your minds on perhaps payroll doesn't need to be co-located with superintendent curriculum, special services, perhaps. Likewise, I work for special services. I mean, I see you in all the schools all the time. So perhaps a better location for that position would be in one of those schools. Challenge the paradigm of do the eight people since, like Mr. Petrie said, all in one now. Maybe the location doesn't need to be that way. Likewise, I work for a company where the CEO was in a cubicle. Everyone is in cubicles. When you have to have private meetings, you have one conference room for that purpose with a lot to do. So, um, again, challenging.
We, we, that topic did come up, um, in, you know, especially with the reduction in staff in the previous year and those duties being allocated to other people. It was the committee's understanding that there's a lot of interaction between the people now, more so than before because of the shared duties, that locating them in different places, well, other than Larry and the bus coordinator, which, yeah, you guys can, you know, we'll find a whole different. That there was a lot of interaction between that, the remaining staff, that having them all in one place was still important.
So we want a RFP for, um, those two buildings?
Is everybody in agreement with that or?
I don't think it hurts to look and see what we can do with it.
I think we should, do we need to, can we just?
Just a consensus is what I was thinking.
Make a list.
No, I'm telling you, we need to really, we would need an RFP if we were actually going to do it. Because we just get an estimate without an RFP to.
Well, not really. Yeah, well, that's pretty much what, it's not actually, you know, yeah.
There may be some time consideration here that we'd be looking for a deadline for at least some of the expense to be incurred or at least encumbered. So, um, there may be some reason to consider one over another just from expediency. So I don't know how long it takes to add a floor to a building versus renovate.
Yeah, so we're going to task you with all of that.
You're going to do it to me like you did to Stan and.
I'm liking this, I'm liking this delegation kind of thing. It's, it's growing on me, yeah, I think that's great. I mean, what do you guys think?
And if I may speak to Joe's point where, you know, I don't know how much the state's population going down affects Farmington. I mean, we got to look at what's happened in Farmington. The state could go down, we could still go up. But I mean, if we're looking at surplus space, you know, we did check out the red schoolhouse too, and that certainly looks like it's surplus space based on this conversation. So, yeah, you're, you're right. I mean, we do have more buildings than we need. So that's something that may be worth looking at disposing of one way or another too.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
A little off-topic, but came up during the conversation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The red building? The schoolhouse, I like that.
Okay, so new business is NIASK, and they were here Friday. Correct, Cynthia? So I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay. I still have, I have two sets of documents I'll pass on. I made some copies that people want, but I did upload to the shared drive just this afternoon. So people want to access it that way they can. But basically what I have is we, back just before Christmas, we sent in, um, the application package, which was an application page, um, and a brief description of the town, a document that had been generated by two co-chairs at each building, working with myself and getting information back and forth from office staff, addressing the seven standards under NIASK and what our buildings currently look like in a snapshot. There was also, I'm trying to think what the other two documents are. Description of the town, the application.
Letter to accompany candidacy?
Excuse me?
A letter to accompany the candidacy.
Ah, thank you. The letter from the superintendent. And we also sent them a copy of the mission statement, statements, beliefs about education, all that the board approved over the summer. So we had a team, two people came out last, um, Friday because part of the candidacy application is a candidacy visit. One was George Edwards, the other person was Kathy, and I never did understand and get her name. I didn't get online to look it up. It begins with an M. But basically, George's experience is at the secondary level and her experience is elementary middle school. They were here all day. We took, we were in each building for about an hour, um, touring the buildings, seeing the buildings, meeting with some of the, um, the co-chairs in particular, talking through things, and then met with the admin team and a meeting of everybody, the two co, the, um, co-chairs, all the admin team and the coaches who have been working with us, um, our consultants, Bob Lister, George Cushing, and Skip Hans were with us as well. So it was a very good day. We had very good feedback, um, at the end of the day, that things should be moving, you know, moving forward. Things they saw that were going well, especially kudos to the facility staff. They thought the buildings were in, um, you know, great facilities and being kept up well. Instead, even, you know, looking at, they weren't saying just because a couple of them were new and new, even as an older building, it looked good and that, you know, well cared for and people care about the schools. They liked the programming they were seeing and the feel of the buildings as they walked through. I didn't bring all my notes with me. Matt, can you think of anything in particular I'm missing from the review?
They did cite the fact that at all three buildings and during the tour was sort of the closest of faculty to staff and students and administration. So they were very happy with the fact that it was consistent throughout, that there's a sense of caring amongst the adults and the students in the buildings, so.
So the next steps are, they actually have, they meet two, three times a year as a group to review these applications and say, okay, yes, we think you're ready to move forward with the full study. We accept you for candidacy, which is the expectation. Their upcoming meeting is this coming weekend. Now, in the back of my mind, I'm going, there's a major storm expected across Massachusetts and they're meeting in Massachusetts. So that, I'm thinking that may get pushed off a little, I don't know. Don't want to speak for them. And they said we should hear by official letter from them within about a week. And be ready to move forward. So our next steps are meeting back with our co-chairs and administration and talking through, okay, now as we look at doing the full study, how do we organize this? How do we schedule it out? So, you know, we're not looking at the whole big thing that needs to, how do we break this up into doable pieces as we move forward? Once we are accepted, there's a total of anywhere from one to three years before they expect to come back to do their, um, big review. And I think we currently have projected out for spring of 2017, um, looking at where they're looking at it and what we know we have to do to do this. We're saying, you know, maybe we move that to the fall of 2017. We're going to keep that a moving target and not say, here's our line in the sand.
Right, yeah, yeah.
To see what's reasonable. We want to do a good job. We want to show all the wonderful things about Farmington and be ready to really show all of that to a visiting team that comes in. We don't want to try and push it together into a timeline that doesn't have to be.
Right.
Um, necessarily that specific.
Any questions from the board for Cynthia?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to public participation?
I don't know if you want me, um, do you want me to address the new business, just auto phone call that went out today?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you could do that, sure.
I wanted to give the board, um, some release information, so if you want to have copies. There was a, um, may I hold that one for a minute just so I can have some light? There was a threat found at Farmington High School this morning and the building was evacuated. The Farmington PD, Farmington Fire Department, as well as State PD responded, um, came and they checked the building. You know, I think the students were out of the building for about two hours. They found nothing of a dangerous, any reason to keep people out of the building and everyone was back in. But we did have contact from media. One contact left before this was put together, I could give it to them. Another one was handed this when they came. And the Farmington Police Department has also put out a press release that we talked together and he kind of co, included some of what I have here in his press release. And what he had, I found, had a lot of this. So I just wanted to make the board aware. All calls went out to all high school parents advising them that the students had been evacuated and the location to which they'd been evacuated. And that a follow-up call was made once the students were back in the building, letting the parents know that we'd been cleared, um, by the agencies and that the students were back in the building.
So Channel 9 indicated that this was in connection to phone threats that had like gone up the Eastern Seaboard. This was a completely different incident? That's not how they reported on it, file pod?
Yeah, there wasn't a phone threat like everybody else's. So, well, kudos to the staff and taking care of this and the disruption in their day.
Pretty cool though.
I will say the police did express kudos to the staff and how well they handled. I was here when the students evacuated and they, I mean, they went right out. There were people out there saying, you know, no, don't lie. and they, I mean, they went right out, there were people out there saying, you know, no, don't line up where you would for fire drill, continue on. It was all set that they go to another building, that building was ready for them. Given the day that it was and the weather that it was, nobody wanted anybody out in this any longer than absolutely necessary.
Thank you. Okay, now we can have public participation, anybody else?
The gate money was mentioned earlier, I just had a question on that. So, the money for basketball games, where does that go? Is that general fund or does that support athletics?
Yes, it is general fund revenue, yes, to support athletes.
To support ath- those are.
I don't know if I'd say that, and that's, it's funny, cause that's why I asked that question. Because a previous board years ago, when there wasn't football admission gate, that money used to go directly into a fund here at the high school that was used purely for athletics. And actually, my father sat on the board, who voted to put it in the general fund. And I have thought about it, well, he did, I always disagreed with it, but I've been thinking about it lately and I just wanted to get clarification on that, because.
I have seen athletic gate receipt monies put into a separate, sort of like an enterprise fund.
Yeah.
So that the balance rolls over year after year after year, and then you have that budget. And then you're definitely able to make some decisions about, okay, this is what we're gonna use for, you know, whether it's uniforms or things like that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I mean, you gotta think the gates would cover the uniforms at least, at least for basketball, I don't know about football and the pads and everything.
The booster club, I think, did the booster club buy all the uniforms this year? Was the school that did?
And we do charge for football games, and it's a little bit more open, so.
We do, yes.
Okay, but that money goes to?
The football boosters specifically, and then they are, they use that to help offset some of the costs of some of the things we would do with football. For example, we need, we gotta do sled this year, they paid for the sled, the tackling sled and stuff like that.
Okay, does the basketball team have a booster? Do other teams have boosters?
There is a booster, there is another booster club that used to be for most of the other teams, it's changed in a few years because of some changes structurally up here, of who gets to run concessions during different seasons and.
There's no concessions during volleyball, is there? No, not at all.
Well, because they farmed it out to different classes who don't follow through, you know, from one year to the next, so. But there is another booster club, I happen to run it.
Okay.
I, my, my, my question for it was not that, not, I'm not gonna suggest that the gate receipts for basketball go to the other booster club. I'm gonna suggest that it go, at some point, I'm gonna suggest that it go to the high school earmarked for athletics and not back into the general fund, put into a student activity account earmarked for athletics. Cause there's gotta be one, at least one up here. And not necessarily just, just for basketball, you know, for other needs as well. You know, it's just, I, I've been going to other schools to some of their games and noticing that they, they charge considerably more to get into a game than we do, and I always wondered why, and that's why, because then they use it for athletics. We haven't gone up, cause it just goes into the general fund, and so I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, I don't wanna speak for you, but I know that previous administrators have said, well, why, why bother to go up on the fee when it's not going back towards athletics? It's just gonna go in the general fund.
And you want people in the stands too, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
If the stands are filling up, you can raise the price, if they're empty, you can't really raise the price.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Just a thought I had on the SAU positions, where you look to completely eliminate a full-time position. You've got two point eight positions where you're fully absorbing the insurance cost and stuff, so to make those one full-time equivalent instead of point eight full-time equivalent, might pick up some of those duties without the additional cost of the benefits, cause they're already paid for one way or another, so. Just looking for creative ways to use money, we'll still get in as much work product as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, one more, I remember what it was. Considering the events of today and stuff, is there a possibility of like FEMA grant money or anything to put in that second, even if it's a dirt road, alternative vehicle entrance and egress for Valley View and the high school?
I thought we've looked into it.
Yeah, I haven't, we haven't talked about it really much since I've been on the board, other than.
Sticky subject.
They used to ask Joe and Penny, they have the history here.
Well, I know that there's been talk about, you know, another road and there's always a cost, but, you know, considering recent events here and elsewhere, you know, I don't, you know, grant money. I always like spending somebody else's money, cause they're doing it to us, so.
Uh, matter of fact, I heard a bill for L chip money, and that, that might be a possibility with the Little Red Schoolhouse. I'll have to check into it and possibly make an application, which would, you know, you could.
I don't see how that helps get it.
Well, it's, it, that's, that could be, that could be another entrance next to the Little Red Schoolhouse, through there and through the back. Come back around the building.
I guess I haven't seen that, I guess I'm not that familiar with the terrain.
Does the Little Red Schoolhouse have the right of way all the way around though?
Yes, well, that house in the back, we, we need to do something with that.
I was gonna say, we can't go through there without their permission.
Well, no, I think we got, I think, I'm not exactly sure, you know Larry, if that, did they block us off? Well, that, there's, I'd have to look at the plan.
We talked about going all the way out to Bay Road too.
Well, that, when the high school was built, that was part of the long-term plan.
Well, but the.
And I thought at one time the town.
The residents of Bay Road were, came out in droves to stop that.
Because I think the planning board at one time with the development that was going out on Bay Road had actually worked out something to go through there with the, cause there's conservation land up there, right? Is it, to go by the water tower there, it was town land. There was something and, and it got resistant, so it just, it was done.
And that road by the water tower does go to a path that goes right down to the.
Yeah, it was resisted by the resistance, that's the word I used.
I wasn't thinking of full-time, you know, an alternate entrance, but something when stuff.
An emergency exit.
Where you don't want it to go, and you need to move people out quickly.
One of, one of the things we did a few years back, we actually had that graded up through the water tower and cleared. And I'm not, I don't think we plowed it, but it, it might be.
There were boulders blocking it now, so.
Boulders in there now? Who the heck did that?
It is not passable by, well, the Humvee might make it through.
Because I don't, then I want the cars.
Well, we did that because so a fire truck could come down through there.
The, the big tanker would make it down there, I think.
But it's, that should be cleared in case you do need that access. And, and the gate's locked anyway, so you can't, you know, you can't just pass, you know, any vehicle pass through there. But emergency vehicles should have the key and away you go.
Right, should we task buildings and grounds with that to check that out, see why that boulder's there?
You're a taxing person, you know that. You can volunteer in all kinds.
I know, right?
You give her a gavel, she just runs away with it.
Okay, any more public participation before we go into non-public? No, no sorry, go ahead. I don't know, it all depends on what you're gonna say, I might be sorry, right?
What is the next step for the health insurance savings plan?
I don't know that there is a next step on the.
Are we gonna try to get it?
That would be my thought.
Keep trying until you.
Till you drop that date, cause then if it doesn't happen, it's, there's gonna be more cuts, as simple as that. You can't, we don't have a choice.
Who's gonna take the next step, pick up the car?
Well, clearly I'm going to let somebody else have a shot at it.
Don't you look at me.
I mean, I can certainly contact council and see, you know, we did work with Drummond Woodson.
We just need to just reach out.
Yeah, oh yeah, do we still have the consultants available?
You just, it'd be nice to just be able to reach out and just talk to people.
Consultants are not the ones that would actually, their, their role was to look at the benefits, to look at the pricing. Was it unfair? Was it comparable? Drummond Woodson's role was to be able to say, you know, look, can we have some discussions over making some kind of an offer? I mean, I'll certainly go and contact them if it's, if it's what the board would like to.
Yeah.
Who does Drummond and Woodson reach out to when they, I don't understand.
Peter Miller is the unit serve director. That is, that would be Attorney Upton's equivalent, and that's who he would have reached out to back in November. And honestly, I sat at that meeting, I said two words, so it was really Matt Upton running the meeting, so it's not like you have a lot to do.
I, I am willing to try, but, you know, I, and I, I work with Peter Miller, you know, he, we.
Was Peter Miller there though? No, he wasn't.
He wasn't there?
No, he was not.
Is it possible this could be cleared up by the thirtieth?
It would be wonderful, if it could be.
Oh, and the only reason why I bring up the consultants is part of what they were tasked with was come up with a comparable plan, right? And I think that's kind of the point of contention, I mean, I'm making an assumption, of course. Some people think it's comparable and some people don't, it's the, the consultants who said it was. So, I mean, obviously, that's a very broad statement, comparable. So I, I don't know, I think it's reasonable to bring the consultants back in and say, okay, that wasn't comparable. Can you give us something a little more comparable? And, and whatever that definition would be according to both sides of the negotiation table.
It is, it is comparable, and which is why the original proposal that was made said, okay, you know, we'll, we'll assist with some different cost sharing and got creative. So, I mean, it's hard for me to really speak to really what happened behind the scenes, to be honest with you. I mean, I just know that, I knew what some pieces that were happening. Yeah, the little bit of the timeline that I know is that IPG came, and Laura, you can feel free, IPG came to, to show you the comparable plan.
Yes.
And then, did you meet with your group to talk about that plan?
We had, at that point, I don't believe that we realized they were really planning on switching. They were saying we were, we were looking at that, so we put that out to the district and we had the PowerPoint presentation from Jeff Kandrowski, who came in and put that out to the whole district.
Was it enough, oh, sorry, was it enough information to make a decision, do you think, at that point?
I don't think we're under, it's fourteen people, okay. Okay, so that was the first problem, was fourteen people came. We never voted on it because we were still, we looked at the figures and then we said, okay, let's come up with what we think would be a little more beneficial to us, cause it is a huge amount of pocket expense, of course, it really is. And, you know, fair and comparable or.
Alright, well, let's just leave it at that, that we're trying to, we'll try to work something out between the two parties and, and come to a something that works for, for both.
We were negotiating and, pretty much made us feel like it was a done deal too, so.
Okay.
I, I, I have a question.
Okay, anything else Angie?
Okay, I just wanted to stress, timeless of the essence on that.
Yeah, we know.
Oh, sorry, and just one more thing, very generically speaking, when an administrator is put on paid administrative leave, does anyone know the guidelines, laws around that? I mean, you asked a lot about, can this get drawn on and paid leave, stays paid leave?
We can't.
Indefinitely?
We can't talk about generically speaking, cause it's, no.
There's no laws around that?
No.
About that, no, okay, thank you.
I, I have a question for Lori. I heard a rumor that school care was being merged into Anthem, or they got bought out, is there any truth to that? Or what have you heard?
I have a reach out to the Director of School Care. School Care is a coalition made up of school, school districts and some communities and towns. Pretty much started back, I think it was nineteen ninety-four or so, with teachers. In the spring, there were some announcements and bulletins that came up that were exploring Cigna and Anthem, a whole buyout process. This was another reason why we also brought in the consultants, cause we didn't know also how all of this works with a federal buyout and if it was possible, what it would mean in the future. So that was the other reason why we also involved the consultants early in the spring. To my knowledge, nothing yet has come to fruition on this, because it's, it's at many levels, many, many layers, federal, state. But I do have a reach out to the Director of School Care, Lisa Ducat, so I can get an update, cause I, personally, I know, you know, it was brought up Friday evening and, and would be good if we're all in the know and have an update.
Who's, who's doing the scripts?
Scripts?
The scripts, the prescriptions.
Prescriptions under the school care piece? She's off the top of my head.
Is that still Merck? Does that, anybody know?
It's, it's not.
Slash you.
It is through Cigna Direct, right? Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't want to throw out Cigna, there's so many, to be honest with you, thank you. Correct, thank you.
I thought school care was a plan that Cigna offered, so school care is its own organization.
Right, that's correct, it's a coalition of, of teacher memberships.
So we buy insurance from school care and then you're Cigna that's the provider.
Correct.
I thought it was a plan that Cigna's offering, okay.
No.
So that's, that's a pool, basically?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go so far as to call it a pool, it is a coalition of school districts that join into the coalition. And with that, sort of like that purchase power of, of school districts. Yeah. That's how it's, and, and, you know, they're subject to the Bureau of Securities, just like Health Trust was.
So I guess Laura, what we're gonna do is we'll, we'll let you do your, reach out to them and then come back to us and see where, in the meantime, if the, if, if the union reaches out or has a meeting or has some other ideas, I'm.
You as the chair, I would provide you with an update, yes.
Okay, perfect, alright.
We had a kind of conversation, I'm sorry to bring this up earlier, I forgot, with the superintendent back in December, saying that we would like to see fall coaching nominations brought forward in January. That clearly hasn't happened for whatever reasons, but since we have the high school principal here, can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting that we're gonna bring forward nominations for fall coaches? The evaluations should be done, there's been ample time to get evaluations done, and we need to do fall coaching nominations now, because if the board decides that we're gonna go in a different direction with anything, we can post the position and give ample time.
Any things?
Motion going to non-public under RSA ninety-one A colon three, two, A, B, and C resignations nominations.
Second, second by Penny, all in favor by Laura?
Aye.
Aye.